All right. Now, at these first few questions, we're not necessarily gonna have anything like that on the actual test, because obviously you can't draw. Or, I guess theoretically, I could do it where you draw in using your mouse, but um I doubt we'd all be that good with that yet. I mean, might do that so you get better, so by the time I get you in organic, you can actually draw off your mouse, but no, we're not gonna do that. But we're gonna draw roughly the diagram that they're talking about here, so half cell and half cell. And I'll have an electrode, and I'll make it bigger so I can write on it. Because both of these are actually copper electrodes. And both of these, the solution that goes in there has got copper two plus ions in it. That's my salt bridge. And I connect these, I'm gonna put my little meter over here. All right, now, it wants us to label the components like the anode and cathode, so which one is the cathode? Now, interesting, it wouldn't really matter on this one, because they're both the same half cell. Um, but uh if I wanna actually show how this is actually going, where the uh anode, the uh electrode on the left is generating electrons by kicking off the copper. And the electrons are going, I've defined the left side as where the oxidation takes place, correct? So it has to be the cathode. Therefore, this is the anode. And typically, when we draw, make our drawings like that, we always do that, cathode should always be on the left. Actually, I got those words backwards. Everything I said was absolutely right, but I reversed my words. Wait. Alright, so half reaction over here. Making electron, electrodes. Half reaction over here is eating up those electrons. This is my anode. That's a little bit better, right? Hmm, excuse me. Now, does it want? No, it doesn't necessarily want us to do anything more than that, right? It's just a diagram labeling our anode cathode, uh labeling the directions for the electrons. And technically, when it's talking about catho- cathion flow and anion flow, that's talking about how it goes into the salt bridge. But obviously, I didn't leave myself enough room to do that, so.
What is the cathion and anion flow?
On this one, I didn't even label what the um uh Oh, it does say sulfate ions, so uh what's gonna happen to balance out our actual charges then is, as this is being produced, we would need more negative ions to counterbalance it, so um I should be to zoom in on this thing. Yeah. So if I zoom in here, I can put that on my salt bridge. Excuse me, we have um sulfate ions going into the solution. And over here, since we're gonna be losing positive ions, we need to add more positive ions. And, no, I've zoomed in too far. Um, did it even say? It didn't say anything at all about what my salt bridge is actually made out of, so I'm just gonna do, assume something like sodium's coming out. Then that's implying that our salt bridge is sodium sulfate. Well, that's interesting. Could zoom in, but then it turned off my keyboard. Alright, so this next one, it just wants to do that same thing, but it's mostly the cell notation. Now, shorthand way and easy way would just to be able to show that the copper solid turns into copper ions on the left. So on the anode, and then the cathode converts it back into solid. Now, the reason I left the space here, to be a little bit more accurate, we wanna show which one is which, based on the concentration. Now, technically, for this to go forward, always, you need to have the low concentration as the anode. And the high concentration as the cathode. But ironically, how this question is worded, in any concentration cell, there is absolutely no reason that you couldn't have just done simple as that. Without the concentrations there. Alright. Three is actually kind of easy, once we realize what's going on and what we can leave off. So anode is that left side of the double bar. So it is the Ag turning into AgCl. Now, what's interesting about that, the Cl is kind of a spectator in this particular reaction, so I'm gonna leave it off this equation and just point out that's going to silver ions. Now, once we identify our species that's being oxidized, we balance this equation, the half reaction, just like we would any balance ha- balancing reaction. And since I don't have to do anything with hydrogens or oxygens, the only thing I have to do is add electrons there. In the cathode, we're gonna do the same thing, so I'm ignoring the Cl, so this is H plus aqueous. Turning into H two gas, and I'm ignoring the platinum, it's also why it's on the other bar, it's telling you it's an inner electrode, it's not part of the equation. So I'll need to do two of these to get the hydrogens right, and then I'll add two electrons to balance out that charge. Given us an overall reaction, I'll have to double everything in the top reaction. Now, a good way to check that you've balanced everything correct, just make sure all the charges are balanced on both sides, as well as all the atoms are balanced. Alright, now we're finally to a math question, but it is dealing with that concentration cell. So technically, any E of a cell, the equation you use, it's called the Nernst equation, but it's, it's this one right here that we had in our and it is something that's on the, in the instructions on the practice test and the actual test, so you don't have to have that memorized. But this is a concentration cell, so this thing's always zero. So to calculate our E of our cell, we're just plugging in everything else, so our R is the eight point three one four. The temperature, I need it in Kelvin, so that's two hundred ninety eight point two Kelvin. The N, we were going from copper two plus to just a copper one. This is gonna be two moles of electrons. And then Faraday's constant, ninety six thousand four hundred eighty five coulombs per mole of electrons. And our Q. Technically, we're gonna be using that overall equation that I was gonna, that we would have generated by combining these two equations, but ironically, that's just this thing. So my low concentration of the copper's gonna go on top. Because that's the products. High concentration is going on the bottom, because that's the reactants in that equation. And now technically, we're just plugging this stuff into our calculator. So I'm gonna do the point one divided by one. Take the natural log of that. Multiply this by eight point three one four and two ninety eight. Divided by the two, and also divided by the Faraday's constant. And we get it's negative point two oh nine, but if you remember, we need to flip that sign. I just wanna check. Ninety six thousand four eighty five, two, two ninety eight point two, eight point three one four. Oh, what'd I do? Hmm, oh, I see what I did. So I should have an answer of point zero three, no, I should be able to get three significant figures, so point zero th- two nine six. And I have a, I got a number written down here that I thought I got from this problem, so I'm gonna recalculate, recalculate this. I think I had put point one in, I did, alright, so this is not the right answer, I had put point one in that first time. My answer should be, yeah, quite a bit more, so point zero five nine two.
I see.
I just erased my work. Alright, but obviously, we get, that kinda makes sense, if I had ten times more voltage, I shouldn't, or ten times more concentration of my products, I shouldn't actually get as much voltage on it. Alright, fuel cells are just kind of a, a neat idea, in the sense that, um, so if I have a half cell, and even if it's this copper one up here. So in that copper one that was up there, um, this was always a high concentration, no, wait, reverse that. Rebuilding this one. So, since the top one, you're actually making more ions here, this is always a low concentration. And this is always a high concentration. Well, if I make the cell out of this um and let it go for an extended period of time, I would get to the point where the concentrations would be the same. So when these two concentrations equal each other, you would have a situation where the voltage is zero. And it is simply because if Q was one, so if they're the same, if these were the same, this becomes zero. Which zeros out all of this, so your cell is zero. So you want to have a difference there to keep this going. So what we do in a um fuel cell is, we would drain this out and add more low concentration in there, drain this out, add more high concentration here. And so we just have a big huge reservoir of more low concentration or more high concentration, and we just keep swapping out the fluids. And the idea of the fuel cell, even think about it as, uh, uh, in a, in a like the Tesla cars, rather than recharging the car, rather than hooking up and charging it out, you would actually be changing out the fluid, the electrolyte. Now, Tesla's not doing that, because their cars are solid batteries, you can't really change them out without removing the material. There are fuel cells out, out in the real world for like power companies and such, but we're talking about, they're the size of like uh tractor trailers. They're, they're not really small, portable units. But they do the same type of thing, you charge them up just like a battery, where you force the electrons to go backwards. And if that happened, you would actually lower your concentration over time. Then you pump that back in, build up a big store of low concentrated copper, build up a big huge store of high concentrated copper, and then when you wanted to go forward, you just connect those back up and let them, let them go. Now, yeah.
From what I've heard of fuel cells, they seem to involve, once I've heard about, high temperature salt and hydrogen ions.
Well, so, the chemically speaking, only thing you need to do to get a, set up a fuel cell would to be, would to have your um electrochemical cells, the half cells, as liquids, because then you could transfer it. Where the chemistry gets a little bit more tricky, because while we could do it with a copper concentration cell, we're never getting much voltage. It's always like that point zero five, so it'd take a lot of these to generate power, a lot of individual cells. Um, but if you change the chemistry, uh, you can get a situation where the concentration makes a bigger, bigger impact. So, um, the balancing act is, you want the chemistry to give you a good um outlet. You also want a situation, because here's another problem that would happen, this high concentration copper, turns out copper KSPs for anything like the anion that goes back in here, might cause precipitation to occur. And if I start precipitating on my high cop- high concentration copper, that's gonna interfere with my chemistry, especially if it deposits all over my uh electrode. So you want, you, it's a wonderful balancing act for the chemical engineers to do this. You want something that you can get relatively, or really high concentrations and really low concentrations, without any precipitation to occur. But you also want some good electrolyte differences between them. Uh, I know, um there's a couple stable in use fuel cells, I think one of them is, the biggest one is in Australia, and it's a vanadium chemistry, but it is all liquid, and it's a cool enough one, it's just it's vanadium, so it would not be a good thing to have leak out and spill, so it is something that gets monitored.
Yeah.
But it's, keeps it small, keeps the size small. But in theory, you know, I have twenty acres, I could potentially build a copper um uh battery, empower my whole house with a giant copper fuel cell. But um, we'd be talking about some really big tanks that would be necessary. But on twenty acres, I could have really big tanks, my neighbors might complain if I have tanks that look like I'm hoarding petroleum, but you know. It would be fun to tell them, no, it's a battery, because they wouldn't believe that.
Yeah, which, was, I think, I remember reading some si- article in a kid's science, I don't even remember where, but it was that some BMWs were being built with fuel cells powering them.
Yeah, most of those, so the fuel cells that are going into cars, um, th- there's two big ones that happen, it's either hydrogen gas is added in the fuel cell as making water, but the water is, is allowed to just evaporate off, so you're actually just constantly adding the reactant, the hydrogen, and water's being discarded. Um, the other type of fuel cell is more of a closed loop, like a battery. Uh huh. And um, you would have like a s- a water in a container, and you run the charge and generate the hydrogen gas, and then they reverse the process eventually. So kind of more like a closed loop, but you're using a water-hydrogen mixture as a battery. But that's less common, because even though it's an easy process to turn water into hydrogen using electroly- electrolysis, it's a very slow process. So you typically need very high voltage, which is not something that um is easy to get, and it does wear down the um electrodes too quickly, so most fuel cells for cars, you're putting hydrogen gas into them.
And that's not exactly something you could build in your backyard?
Um, well, you could, um it has a bigger chance of blowing up if you do it wrong. And it gets back to, if I were gonna do one of these for fun, uh, uh, just for kicks of saying I built a fuel cell, I would want it to be ridiculously safe for when I'm not anywhere near it. And a copper concentration cell, if it leaks out, it's gonna kill the grass around there, but I don't need to call in the EPA and say I've spilt anything bad, because it would not be enough to cause any long-term effects to anything other than the grass it gets to, I mean, we can use this stuff to as pesticides, so. I, it would be I would be less worried about it causing problems, but it wouldn't be a very good battery, I, I can't imagine, I, I, I would love to sit down sometime and do the math based on some real, real-world chemistry numbers, just to figure out how big you'd have to get to get equivalent to like one of those Tesla power walls. And if you haven't seen them, they're, you know, maybe a meter tall, but they're just batteries that you would mount in like the wall of your house, and that's your battery backup. And um, I have no idea how much power they actually hold, so have no idea how much, how long you could run your house. But I know it puts out enough voltage, it could run like an air conditioner, refrigerator, it can run your whole house, I just don't know how long it lasts. And I'd be really curious how big of a copper flow battery'd have to be to make it work, maybe someday I'll get bored and do that, but I need more time.
Could be, yeah. Um, s- simply for research purposes, what would you call um a battery that um a battery, a fuel cell that uses hydrogen gas?
It would just be a hydrogen fuel cell.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and you can actually buy little STEM science fair kits that will do it. It's, it's kinda neat that, um, the one I've seen, it looks like a little car that would drive on the, on the ground. But you actually hook a battery up on it, and you will see, you put like balloons or something on one side, you'll see the balloons fill up. And what's going on is the battery's causing the fuel cell to generate hydrogen and oxygen. And then you kinda flip the switch the other way, and that same hydrogen and oxygen generate water as the reaction goes backwards, but it also creates electricity, and that's what drives the car.
Yeah.
Now, it's not very fast, and it doesn't work very well, I did a STEM project a few years back with a bunch of middle schoolers, and out of the twelve kits we got, one of them generated enough power to move the car forward. Matter of fact, I, we, we had a special, a PBS show we showed with them, and some engineers at MIT did the same thing to power a uh alternative fuel car, now this is, this is, might have been even from the nineteen eighties, so primitive by comparison. And they purchased a really big demonstration fuel cell, like twelve inches by twelve inches. And it turned out that was enough to generate enough power to run the lights on a golf cart. But they could not drive the motor, so their alternative fuel golf cart was running on golf cart batteries. Because their fuel cell wouldn't actually turn the motor. Alright.
I wonder, you, um, can remember if Bemsher's machines and Vendegrave machines produce high voltage or high amperage?
I don't really remember for sure, I believe it's high voltage but low amperage. But I don't remember for sure. I know they feel wonderful when you get close to them and they've been going, because we had one that somebody left on for too long when I was an undergrad, and I got the job, I'd go turn it off. And to get to the power cord, I'd have to go too close to it, and the entire time I'm getting there, I'm getting a shock from it. It was a painful shock, too. Alright. Question six, we got a galvanic cell with two potential half reactions. All this really means is we're making a volatile cell using these two. So which of these would be a better one to use as an anode, the high voltage or the low voltage?
Uh, let's see here, well cathode, uh, the anode is where it's absorbed, the electrode is absorbing electrons and transferring them to the cathode. So um we would probably want C to D to be our anode.
That's right, small one is, the slowest voltage is your best anode always, especially if you want it to be a spontaneous reaction. Alright, so since we've decided that, when we write our balanced equation, we would be reversing the equation that makes up our anode. So, and I'd be doubling that first one, so I'm gonna have two As and a D going to form two Bs and a C. So I doubled everything in the first one to balance out the electrons, and I reversed the equation we decided to use as our anode. And now I'll use this equation to calculate our cell voltage, so one point five zero minus a negative point five zero volts, and I'm gonna do this without a calculator.
Going down on a limb now, are we?
Wow, I know, dare, dare, daring. Now, this one, I will use a calculator, because delta G ot from our E is negative NF E ot. That is enough to go right into my calculator, so my N on this case was two electrons. Faraday is ninety six thousand four hundred and eighty five, and our electrons is just two. This'll give us our value in joules. And since this is a delta G, we typically want kilojoules, so I'm gonna round this to three hundred and eighty six kilojoules, and it is negative. Alright, technically, two more problems. Number seven, um, does involve some math, just like before, because we wanna calculate the charge which passes through in one hour. Well, that's not that hard to calculate, so one hour, we wanna turn that into seconds. So there are sixty minutes and an hour. And sixty seconds and a minute. And we have a current of one thousand amps, which says there is a thousand coulombs per second going through there. Seconds would cancel, minutes would cancel, hours would cancel, that's gonna give us our number. Oh, that makes the math easy, because sixty times sixty is thirty six thousand thirty six hundred, we're just gonna add more zeros to that, so. Three point six million coulombs. That's gonna play a lot of magnesium. Cause this next one, it wants to calculate the amount of magnesium that could be produced in that time. So if we had, and actually you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna write this as if we. Um, we're starting with the one hour and a thousand coulombs, so I'm gonna repeat what we just calculated. Once we would have the coulombs, we're gonna figure out how many moles of electrons that's equivalent to. And one mole of electron has ninety-six thousand four hundred and eighty-five coulombs. Faraday's constant is how we turn that into our moles of electrons. And this equation tells us that for every two moles of electrons, we would produce one mole of magnesium. From the magnesium ions. And then the last thing. I need the molecular weight of magnesium, it's twenty-four. I think it's twenty-four, three, one. The periodic table is just out of eye shot.
Here, just give me a second, I'll pull it out.
I have a, I, I have one close enough, I just. Maybe after tomorrow, I get my eyes checked tomorrow, maybe I'll be able to see across the room better. Although I have old man eyes, so they won't be able to give me. Good contact or good glasses tomorrow. I'll have to order them.
Yeah. It's a persistent problem in my family too.
You know, it was so nice when I didn't have to get the um, uh. Reading part added to mine, so my bifocal aspects, cause. My prescription is while my eyes are bad, it's an easy one to do, so typically I could get glasses almost the same day I actually. Got my prescription or within a day, cause there was nothing very terribly complex about my prescription. Wow, that's a lot of magnesium. And. Well, it says exactly one hour, so we're not gonna round. It was a thousand with a decimal, so four significant figures. Four hundred fifty-three point five grams.
That is quite a lot of magnesium.
That's a huge current. Thousand amps.
Yeah. Uh, let's see here. Try to balance the equation for molten uh, potassium chloride. Now, I would expect when it goes molten. It dissociates. And what do you mean by electrolysis?
Electrolysis is where we're gonna run current through there. What we're gonna do is cause those ions. Um, to separate, so really all we're doing were mul- melt- molten copper chloride liquid. Will expose the copper ions and chlorine ions. Now, reason that's important to, to distinguish. Um, when copper, when potassium chloride or any ionic solid is at, in its solid form. It will not conduct electricity. Even though it's made up of ions, the ions have essentially neutralized themselves and the electrons will not move freely across that. If I melded, the electrons are now suddenly able to move through it. So that's the whole purpose of the molten, is to put it in an environment where the electrons can move freely. And once they can move freely, I can take the copper. Liquid. And let it turn into copper. Well, it'll be liquid at first, but it'll be, I'm saying copper, potassium, but it'll turn into potassium without a charge because it's gonna absorb an electron. And the chlorine. End up being two of these, cause it's gonna turn into chlorine, it'll be gas now. By giving off two electrons. Now, just melting it won't do that. If I, I get potassium chloride up to um, the melting point, it's not like it's gonna spontaneously turn into potassium and chlorine. I would actually have to force the current into it. Um, the electrode that is more negative. Excuse me. Yeah, the one that we're forcing electrons into, so the ones being more negative will get the potassium to collect there. And the electrode that's on the other end, the more positive one will actually, the chlorine would form there. So they're gonna form in separate locations, but they're gonna be related to you're running the current through there. But it doesn't ask us what the voltage it needed for that, it just wants us to have this balanced equation. So my balanced equation for this, I would have two potassiums and two chlorines. Forming a single potassium and a chlorine gas. And I should have phases here.
Um, let's see. No, wait a second, um. You wouldn't have that because if you would have two chlor- uh, two potassiums.
You're right.
On either side.
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah. Alright. That is it for this worksheet. Now, rather than start the next worksheet, we, we, we could, we got plenty of time. I was gonna see if there's anything that. Came off the practice test, uh, that covered chapter seventeen that you wanted to look at first.
I, I haven't looked through the practice test yet.
Have you, Morgan? Nope, I got a head shake. That's okay. Um, so let's go ahead and start looking at the organic worksheet thing. Now. I am recording this, I'll share it with everybody, so, but even if somebody comes into Fridays and asks for it, that we might end up repeating some of this stuff. That's okay. Alright, um, the chapter twenty worksheet is, oh gosh. Difficult and not, um, the hardest part, the part that always gives people the hardest part is the last little bit. But every single, it's not like there's necessarily an easy part, it's easy once we see how to do it. Okay, this one says to name two non-alkenes that have C four H eight. Now, I'm gonna start by just putting four carbons in a row. And then I'm gonna put my hydrogens on here. Five, six, seven, eight. Notice I've run out? So what I'm gonna do is balance this out, I'll erase this guy. And what I wanted to see here is this is just four CH twos. Both these ends want something else. The easy way to make sure they're actually attached to something else, so each carbon has four things, would be to take this and actually arrange it in a ring.
Oh, I actu- I, I've already, um. Worksheet twenty was a lot easier for me than worksheet seventeen, so I went that, went ahead and did most of the problems on it.
Mm-hmm.
So I can say that the other, um. The other shape for this is a triangle with a methyl coming off of it.
It is. Now, what we could have done to pick up on this and, and seen this, there is a, a trick that we teach our organic chemists. When you look at a formula like C four H eight, you wanna identify if it's missing any hydrogens, whether it's saturated or not. And most non, most saturated carbons are all saturated. Uh, the number of hydrogens is twice the number of uh, carbons plus two. So for this to have been saturated, it would have been C four H ten. Now, since it's missing two. Um, hydrogens, we know it either has a single pi bond or one ring. And I'm gonna put that up there, I'm gonna put it here in blue. Since this is missing. Two hydrogens. We know. This molecule. Has one ring. Or one pi bond. But since this one actually said, uh, non-alkenes, we were looking for just rings. And there's only two ways to do one ring, either all four are in one ring or only three are and then one more is coming off of it. Alright, but fortunately for us, since we just had this discussion, this next one, it wants to get us alkenes with four carbons. So we're gonna be doing the same type of thing, putting four in a row and figuring out all the different ways we can do one double bond. An easy one would be to put the double bond between the first and the second. And I'm gonna do one more, but I'm gonna put that between the middle two. Now, I can't do one where it's between the third and the fourth carbon, cause that's really the first and a second. Now, I could do this. Well, what's the other way?
Uh, well.
It's technically regarding this one right here. It's not quite right to say it, it's just that. Cause see how this double bond, on here I have an H and a CH three and on here I have an H and a CH three? When we have two different groups on both sides. We probably should have drawn that. Where we show how it's oriented. Because that could have been cis or trans. And these are two different molecules.
And uh, let me think here. Cis is on the same side, right?
Yep. Now, technically we can name all these. I know it didn't ask it, but I figured I'd actually do them anyway, so up here with cyclo-
It did ask.
Huh? Oh, it does ask to name them. Alright, well, good. Cyclobutane. What was this one called with a single methyl on there?
Uh, I wrote it down, methyl cyclo propane.
And why didn't you say one methyl cyclo propane?
Uh, it would be redundant.
Right, and there's a single substituent off a ring, we don't number it. Alright. You just did these two and decided this was cis, so this one up here is cis two butene. Means this one is trans. Two butene. Alright, what's this very first one we did gonna be called? With a methyl, with a CH two then the double bond?
Um. Uh, that would be one butene.
Does it need a cis or trans?
Nope.
Cause it's got two Hs there. And the last one, that's kinda, kinda, kinda tricky. What's the backbone definitely on that one?
Um, well, it's either way. Well, we know it starts with the CH two, so that would be something pro- propane.
Propane is right.
Uh, two methyl propane.
Yes. Do I need to say two methyl one propane?
Wait, no, you wouldn't have to, because there's only, it can only be the first.
That's right. Since there's only three carbons, the first one must be that double bond. Ooh. Next one, I'm gonna box in my backbone. Now, I know for sure it goes here, cause this is a longer chain. But should I go up or down on the? Uh, on the left there?
Well, I went up with it.
Does it make a difference?
No, it doesn't, but just for symmetry, you know?
So since it doesn't make a difference, does this one have a cis or trans label?
No.
No, even though we made it trans, we could have just easily made it cis. Alright, so where are we numbering from? From the left or the right?
Uh, looks like, uh, we would do it from the left.
Yeah, get the double bond starting at two rather than starting at three. And then-
So we would have, let's see, two comma three dimethyl two butene.
That is correct.
Oh, Christ. I re- I'm not very good at drawing, and this next one strained my abilities. I think I did it right, though.
Ah, alright. Whenever I have to draw these, I start with a simple idea. Heptene means seven in a row. Three heptene, one, two, three, means I have a double bond there. Five methyl, four, five, methyl, and then it says trans. Now, I can't show trans for, uh, uh, for definite here, but it does dema- define where my hydrogens are. Hydrogens are on opposite sides. Alright, now, once I have this very basic condensed structure, I'm gonna come over here and draw it for sure. But I'm gonna define my trans double bond first. Now, on the left side, I had two carbons. That must be a CH two, CH three. On the right, I went to this one, which was a CH. And off that CH, I had a CH three. Or a CH two, CH three. See how I did that? Now, the other way, I think it feels like cheating, but Marvin is a program you guys can get, uh, you have to. Register it, so it's not gonna be a fast process. But um, it won't work until it's registered, but. I was seeing. Trans. Five methyl, was that three heptene?
Uh, yep.
And it'll draw it for me. Doesn't that feel like cheating, though?
Yeah, yeah, kind of.
Did it give us the same thing, though? I need to make this one do something. I would recommend when you, uh, if you sign it for organic, try to get something like Marvin, it'll help you. Alright, two different structures, the formula of C two H six O. When I do these things, one of the first things I wanna find out is if it's saturated or not. Two carbons does support six hydrogens, so this would imply there are no double bonds anywhere or rings. So when I place this out, I'm gonna just worry about the carbons and oxygens first. So I could do it this way. Or I could put the oxygen in the middle, but there's really only two ways I could arrange those three atoms. Now, my question is, can I put the remaining six around either one of these nice? Now, we like to put three hydrogens on each. Now, we like to put three hydrogens on each, or four bonds to each carbon, so that's what I do. That took care of five of my hydrogens, so the six must be off the oxygen. And here, all six of my hydrogens will be off the carbons. And that really is the only two ways to do this.
Um, I guess for B, the first one is an alcohol, and the second one is an ether.
That is right. Now, why does the alcohol have a higher boiling point?
Well, because it has the potential for hydrogen-oxygen bonding, sort of like wa- like in water.
Yeah. How do I do this? Alcohol can hydrogen bond with itself. Alright, well, that pays off here. You already named these two. Alcohol, ether. What we call a carbonyl is between two carbons, or two R groups.
Well, that was the one I could not figure out, actually.
Ketone.
Oh, yep, that, I've actually got the one below it, um.
This one?
Yeah, I, I wasn't, no, the uh, the one on the right side, right below the ketone.
Mm-hmm.
I wrote that one as an amine ketone.
It is actually an amide. Amine ketone, when they're right next to each other, is called an amide.
I see.
Alright, what do we got? A carbonyl with an H next to it?
An aldehyde.
That is an aldehyde. And?
Herbic acid.
Is that the only ones I did? It is. Alright, last page is just nomenclature. I say just, it's not easy nomenclature. But our first goal always is to find our longest continuous chain that has our functional groups in it. So this top one's just a hydrocarbon. And we'll make a difference here. So that is easy enough to do. And where's our number one carbon? On the left or the right?
Uh, the left.
That's right, cuz this one has two substituents on it. Rather than just one, if we come from the other side. So these are just substituents. But they're all the same. So I end up with two, two, five trimethyl.
Hexane.
Hexane. Now, let's just go left to right. So on the left, I have it wrapped around on itself pretty darn impressively, I would say, and oftentimes, I get the mistake where people just call that the backbone, because it goes straight across. Well, it's not. Um, you kinda always wanna do this backbone to make sure you don't get any difficulties. I typically recommend, if you're starting to struggle with it, start in the middle, and when we have a CH, go longest possible way. So we do go straight over here. Doesn't matter if we go straight or down, you'd only get one more methyl. But here, going up gives me two carbons, as opposed to just one.
And so we start on the uh, on the right.
Right.
And we get uh, two, three dimethyl pentane. And uh-
Alright, now we have a ring with two substituents. Since it has two substituents, we have to number them. Shortest path would be one and two. And it doesn't matter which one gets number one, because they're both the exact same thing.
And uh, so we, yeah, one, two, di- di-bromo cyclohexane.
That is right. Alright, this next one, the longest possible chain is not what we go for here. Because we need the longest chain with the functional group in it. So by definition, I want this to be part of my chain. So when I come here, do I wanna go left or right?
Excuse me, the right.
Well, it doesn't actually matter, if you look. Both of those are just three carbons in a row.
Yeah.
Alright, where are we starting to number?
Um, at the uh, functional group.
Well, don't say it that way. The end nearest where the functional group is.
Well, yes.
The functional group isn't a number one here, but if it had none of the methyl on here, it would have been at the number two. So three, what is this functional group called?
Propyl.
It's not isopropyl?
Uh, what's the difference?
Propyl has them three in a row. Isopropyl, the three in the row is connected in the middle.
Well, it is ca-
This is just propyl.
Connected in the middle. It's connected at the end?
Yeah, it's at the end, so it is just propyl.
Oh, okay. And you're just playing mind games?
Yes.
Hexane, yep.
Okay, some double bonds. Will that first one ha- be cis or trans?
It will be cis.
It will, cuz your backbone most definitely curves up. I'm just going straight across, cuz it doesn't make a difference. Alright, which side is number one, though, on this one?
Uh, the left.
Even though I don't get to a substituent until, uh, what is that, gonna be six?
Three. Because on the uh, because we want to get to the double bond as quickly as possible.
Correct.
So that would be cis, six methyl, three heptene.
Alright, so the next one gets cis or trans?
No, because um, it's the same, whi- whichever way you rotate it.
Yep. Those are both the same thing, so it doesn't make a difference. So I'm gonna choose to go this way, make that my substituent. Now, when I get to this double bond, do I need to go up or down?
Down.
Down. Substituent and substituent. Now, which side do I number from? The left or the right?
Uh, looks like I numbered from the left.
Because one, two, three is better, one, two, three, four. Ooh. So I have ethyl substituents and methyls. Which one comes first alphabetically?
Ethyl.
Three ethyl. Four, six dimethyl. Three heptene. Last two, and we're done with this worksheet. I save the best for last. These are definitely more challenging. Alright. Backbone can just zigzag. I have three, what we could call substituents, but one of these substituents is more important than the other two. Which one is calling my backbone?
Hmm, um, oh, uh, the, the OH makes it a pentanol.
Yeah, so it calls our numbering. We're gonna make the two closest to that, or we're gonna put it at the two position, cuz that gets it at the lowest possible number. So that gives us three chloro, four methyl. Big mistake, people just say pentanol. But you need to say where the O uh, O, OH is, so two pentanol. And then, this wonderful guy, I'll just make my backbone go, yeah, get close to going flat. With that as a substituent. It just looks pretty, but it's got a very simple name, doesn't it?
Three ethyl pentane.
Yep.
My monitors keep turning off.
I'm broadcasting black. No, that would be messed up, wouldn't it? No, I'm not doing that.
That, that would. I, I would almost believe you if it wasn't those monitors. My stupid uh wallpaper setting gets messed up when they go to sleep accidentally.
Oh, okay.
Flickering.
Yeah, I end up turning my power management off on my home computer, and just manually turn the monitor off when I'm done.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, that's both our worksheets. Um, that should give us plenty of time to do the practice test, um, or spend some more time on that on Friday, and possibly go over some more of this, so if you work on it and see any problems, we can redo this. Now, on the practice test, some of the nomenclature ones, um, there are gonna be some questions that cycle in there that end up just giving you a blank line, and you have to name it from scratch, so you're not choosing from the multiple choice answers. Um, I don't do any of those on the real test. That's, that is really there to um challenge you, but that's a little bit more complex than I typically do. Uh, that's how, that's the only way they get it in organic chem. In organic chem, they have to name them from a blank line. They get nothing to start with. But you guys, I only do that to show you that I could do it that way on the practice test, but the real test, it's on multiple choice.
I see.
Thank goodness, right?
Oh, you, oh man.
But we do have some people that have already started looking at the practice test. What was I at? So your section, I think I was still at, no one's looked at it. Yeah, your section, no one's looked at it. But the other section, and that typically is a little bit reversed. Uh, the other section, I think I have three people who have actually done a really good attempts at it. And one person, was that right, this class, or is that Kim one I'm thinking? Yeah, I did have one person in the other section that's already got a twenty-five out of twenty-five on the practice test.
Wow.
Yeah.
Good.
And it's not the person who normally does them early, it's somebody new. But uh, that, the other section, I have someone who will probably take this coming test Friday, early morning, like long before we do any review section. And that's the person that's getting awesome scores, so they're going through this class relatively perfect, which is pretty darn cool. And quite impressive, to be honest. Alright, well, I'm going to shut this down, and um, unless either of you have questions.
No, I'm good.
Uh, you can ignore the email I sent you. I think Kelly, do you use Chrome?
Uh, I use a Chrome-based browser, but I I don't use Chrome, no.
Okay, so I don't know.
I use some-
I don't know if it's just me, or if it's Chrome in general, but the, the tabs on Canvas that are like uh, external tools, they don't work. So I was having trouble getting to Zoom, so I had to go through Firefox. So that's what that email was about.
I wonder if that, so those few weeks ago, when Alan Danif was watching us, our VP, and giving my evaluation, and I had emails, I had students who couldn't get in. Um, I never got a lot of feedback from them. But I wonder if it was really due to that, cuz I use Firefox here, and, well, on the school, I'm using Chrome. Me, I'm gonna click on your class and see if it lets me join on this other desktop.
Oh, now, Morgan, one thing it might be is that I don't go through uh Canvas to get at mine. I just went and copied the link to the uh, launch meeting page.
Oh, okay.
And so every morning, I just open my little bookmarks manager and launch that.
That's a good idea.
Oh, this is my other computer, it's doing fine. And I just joined that with Chrome. Um, let me suggest something here, or, or try. I, I think I can do... Is it gonna let me? Yeah. Alright, so this is what I'm seeing when I bring up Zoom on Chrome on the school's computer. So I just clicked on Zoom, and the tab came up, and all I did was click on Start, which, of course, it's not gonna let me do right now, cuz I'm already in it, but it actually did that relatively smoothly, obviously, from, we both saw that. Um, but what I would suggest or check, um, just under Help and then About Chrome, make sure this doesn't wanna update anything. And then the other thing that's kind of odd, you might need to do this, um, under your, I think it's More Tools. Yeah, under More Tools, you'll have this thing called Extensions. Bring that up and see if there's anything on this that needs to be updated, or anything that just looks weird. If there's anything on here that you don't remember installing it, remove it. Because one of those could be conflicting with. There shouldn't be nothing on here that's specifically for Zoom or Canvas. You will probably have Honor Lock on there. Um, that shouldn't be causing any conflicts. But when you go to it, are you, you said it's the, the tabs, it's, these things are not working? On that far?
Yeah. And it's not just Zoom, it's like, uh, for my math class, I do the, my lab mastery. That doesn't work either. But it seems to work on Firefox.
To be honest, being this closely in this semester, since you have Firefox, just use Firefox. Just, I wouldn't even bother to try to figure out what's going on with Chrome.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. There's any number of security reasons why it might be popping up, and I don't do enough with Chrome, even on Linux anymore, to tell you where to look for those.
Yeah.
I do notice, though. My two images, which is just very weird that one of the cameras is left to right. So my images are reversed, but just weird.
Morgan, if, do you have any more math classes to take?
Uh, no.
Oh, I was going to suggest, uh, what's his name? Uh, Kirby Brown is adamantly against using Pearson and nonsense internet products, so it's like a a breath of sweet relief just doing math.
Yeah, I hate Pearson.
Yeah, we, we end up seeing that college professor, see, that gets used, cuz it's easy to grade. It's great if you have a large number of students, or if you're busy doing other things. But if you have any choice, you do something else.
I see. Which, what was it? I think my pre-calculus teacher, I don't think you could rightly call her a teacher. She didn't do any teaching. Her class was basically just a portal to my math lab, and-